Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Madam Speaker and colleagues. I believe where we left off is there's still two bills in the second reading file. Both have been passed on file. However, that doesn't mean that the sponsors of those bills may request for some activity on those bills. So I would wait to hear from those sponsors, Madam Speaker, before I present another matter relative to a letter that the Vice Speaker wrote to you earlier today.
Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with the concurrence and also on behalf of the co-sponsor to this legislation, I would like to move to place Bill 186-33-COR in the third reading.
And you want to speak on the bill?
I did provide, you know, my opening yesterday. I think I provided the information on this just to read and would like to be able to place it up there.
Okay. So on the main motion, Senator Tom Adda, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the bill, the title of the bill is "An Act to Appropriate Funds from the Fiscal Year 2014 Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund." Now, as I was going back and tracing all the appropriations that have been made against this 2014 surplus fund, I noticed that just on the last one that was, last appropriation that was done in November of 2015 by Public Law 33-89 wherein we appropriated $400,000 for the Guam Football Association, a statement was provided by BBMR stating that the appropriation, if passed, will result in basically a $650,000 overdrawing from this surplus account. So there's really, you know, despite the fact that there was mentioned that there was $1.5 million in there, at least in the FY 2014 surplus fund account, there is no money in there. But then with Bill 186, BBMR came, and there, maybe part of it is my confusion, but confusion on my part, but the bill says we are appropriating against a 2014 surplus fund. You read the fiscal note from BBMR, and it's giving you the balance for this FY 2015 unreserved fund balance. So, you know, we're making reference to one account by a certain name, and then the fiscal note makes reference to another account by another name. But then on top of that, the comment that was provided to the bill says, "This proposed legislation," well, it goes through and repeats what the proposed legislation would do or not. It goes, "It is to seeking to appropriate $250,000 from the FY 2014 unappropriated surplus fund. However, such surplus funding is carried forward into the new fiscal year, and the availability of the carried-forward fund balance is dependent on whether or not revenues exceed expenditures at the end of each previous fiscal year." I don't know, some accounting talk that, "As of January 13, 2016, the available unaudited unappropriated surplus of the hotel occupancy tax fund is sufficient to carry the appropriation of $250,000." So, and I think the amount that they're referring to is that there's a $3.5 million account or balance or amount that's in there, whereas in the bill, actually, the bill doesn't even make reference to what we think is the balance in there. But, you know, it's just, it's not clear. We're appropriate, we're already saying, "Here's money that is surplus," but we haven't even, you know, finished the year yet to know if it's really surplus or not. Maybe it's surplus, maybe it looks like a surplus on the books because the money hasn't been released, and so they can't spend against it. And so, you know, if in fact this is the amount, the $3.3 million, $3,451,000 that's in this quote "surplus fund," then all the better, because then there's more money for safety-related projects down in two months. But it's so nebulous as to, you know, how much is really in there? Is it really there? Can we really call it excess? We're not even, you know, halfway through the year. This is a, you know, I just can't see how we can continue doing this. And, you know, if they're saying that going into fiscal year, to this current fiscal year, we would have already been $600,000 in the hole, man, we better tighten up our belts. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Senator Blas to close? Okay, then you were close. You're the primary, right?
So I'll go ahead and, how are you?
Okay, so he'll yield to you then, Senator.
Well, I'll just go ahead and, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the issues and the points that were raised by the previous speaker. And he's right, you know, the bill did not basically present or provide the information with regards to the account, because we were just looking for the $250,000. And, you know, that said, is I would not have presented, or we would not have presented the bill before the body had there not been a fiscal note, you know, provided by the administration identifying the availability of the funds. So with that, Madam Speaker, I ask for the support of my colleagues for this legislation.
Senator Maria Barnes. Okay, so on the motion then to send 186, the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Riespischel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion is to take from the voting file on the matter of the appointment of David Matanani to serve as a member of the Trumoral Land Trust Commission, and to return this back to the Committee of Original Jurisdiction, which is Senator Tom Adda's committee.
No objections, so ordered.
And so, Madam Speaker, the next motion I have is relative to a memorandum that was sent to you today from Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, and copies have been made, and it's requesting you to waive the public hearing requirement for Bill 237-33. And I'll just read it for you. It's been a bill introduced by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, and it's an act to appropriate $1,100,000 from the unreserved fund balance of the Healthy Futures Funds as of September 30, 2015, to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, GMHA, for the payment of GMHA outstanding Guam Power Authority and Guam Water Works Authority obligations. And the Vice Speaker writes in his letter to you that certainly this represents a clear and present danger to the operations of the Guam Memorial Hospital relative to the health and safety of our community if the public hearing requirement is not waived, and that if this bill is not acted upon accordingly and expeditiously by this body. And so I submit this letter to you on behalf of Vice Speaker Cruz, requesting your respectful and favorable consideration to waive the public hearing requirement on the bill that I just mentioned.
Thank you very much, Senator Riespischel, and to our colleagues, is that after carefully, of course, evaluating this request, and I said carefully because I know this body has been criticized last term about the waiving of the public hearing, and this particular bill, though, I'll read the title, is "An Act to Appropriate $1,100,000 from the Unreserved Fund Balance of the Healthy Futures Fund as of September 30, 2015, to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority for the Payment of GMHA Outstanding Guam Power Authority and Guam Water Works Authority Obligations." And we have all received a copy of the letter that was sent to this legislature, this body, and I've provided copies to all of you, that tomorrow is the date in which, of course, there will be the disconnection of water and power to the hospital, and therefore I feel that it is an emergency, it is an endangerment to the lives of the patients at GMH, so I certify that it meets the requirements set forth in Section 2103A, Chapter 2, Title 2 of the Guam Code annotated. Guam law permits me to waive a bill's public hearing requirement when a measure considers an emergency concerning public health and safety. As Vice Speaker Cruz notes, GMHA faces GPA and GWA disconnections constituting a clear and present danger to the people of Guam, and is undoubtedly an emergency concerning public health and safety, thus meeting the law's requirements. So the requirement then for a public hearing, therefore, is hereby waived. Senator Riespischel.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for your ruling and given your ruling that now deems that Bill 237-33 LS is eligible to be placed on the session agenda. So I move that Bill 237-33 LS be placed in the second reading file.
On that motion, hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And colleagues, I have no further motions at this time.
Thank you. We're now at the second reading file. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 237 be placed on the third reading file, and I'd ask for a short opportunity to speak.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, last week, you left on my desk and several other senators' desks a letter that had been provided to you about the fact that GPA had served the hospital with notice of disconnection that was pending and would be effectuated sometime this week. Over the last week, all of us have been sitting, waiting, hoping that someone would tell us what was needed. We were waiting for it to assist. One of our colleagues last week chided a number of us who put appropriation bills on the agenda when we hadn't addressed this one issue. And it wasn't that we were ignorant of it, Madam Chair Speaker, we were waiting. This morning, I received a copy of a letter that was sent to the General Manager of the Guam Water Works Authority from the interim CEO of the hospital, Dr. Lozama. In it, Dr. Lozama asked GWA for some consideration about their payment in excess of half a million dollars. In the letter, he offers to pay $75,000 a month, noting that $48,000 a month is their usual monthly bill, and therefore, the remaining $27,000 would and could be used to pay down the half million. Needless to say, that would be over 20 months of paying down the half million outstanding to them. Madam Speaker, I also know that the CCU was in San Francisco this last week, because when you sent that letter, when you provided me with a copy of that letter, I immediately texted two of the members on the board, and I asked, "How firm was this disconnection notice?" I received a return text that they were in San Francisco discussing the bond. They had a revenue bond that they were trying to sell. And with a revenue bond and one of your largest customers, a half million dollars in their rears, it does not look too good. That was not my concern. My concern was the fact that the GWA General Manager and the CCU Board was meeting today to try to figure out whether or not they would or would not disconnect. Knowing that they had just come back from San Francisco on a revenue bond, and the fact that there is a need for all the bonds that they are trying to float, though none of them have told me so, I would only imagine that they needed to do something to prove to the bond buyers that they were serious about keeping themselves afloat and addressing the collection of revenue so they could pay the bonds. I did not want to see what the response was going to be today. I was afraid. And I'll admit, I'm not a very good player of playing chicken. If anybody has ever seen me playing any sports, if something is flying towards me, I will not only blink, I will flinch and probably duck. And so, on this one, I was not willing to play with the lives of the patients up at the hospital, to lose water for even 10 minutes, just to make the point. And yesterday, when we were discussing Bill 199, Senator James Espaldón reminded me, reminded all of us, that we really should be true to the purpose for which we have certain funds. And the Healthy Futures Fund, that the appropriation that we were considering was inappropriate, was not within the list of intended mandated projects for the Healthy Futures Fund. But this was and is something. The hospital, it mentions all kinds of things about assisting the hospital. And in fact, Senator Espaldón came by my office shortly after I had already introduced Bill 237, and he had a copy of a bill that he was going to be introducing on the same subject. And so, one of my motions is going to ask that he be named as a co-sponsor of this legislation, since he was going to do it also today. But Madam Speaker, I don't know where there's cash in the government. I hate to admit that, as Chairman of OFP. Because yesterday, when we received the fiscal note for 199, I was going on a CRR that had been issued by BBMR, DOA, and Revenue and Taxation for October, which was dated November the 21st. And in it, it showed a transfer of $12 million into the Healthy Futures Fund, showing that there was $23 million collected in the Healthy Futures Fund, of which the legislature had appropriated $16 million. And at the very bottom line, it said, "Unappropriated amount, $6.9 million." But when we received the note yesterday from BBMR on the fiscal note for 199, they only say there's $1.8 million left. And so, I'd like to use this amount, and that's why the bill is written this way, because they say, "However, in accordance with the Department of Administration's preliminary analysis, the unreserved surplus of HHF as of September 30th is approximately 1.8." So the bill specifically says the unreserved surplus of the HHF of 1.1. I'm hoping that four days later, there's still $1.1 million in there, and so I would like that appropriated directly to GTA, I mean, not GTA, to GPA and GWA for the payment of the water bills and power bill. I did not want the CCU to meet this afternoon and decide that it would look bad that they had a million-dollar outstanding that had been accumulating. Actually, in the letter that Dr. Lozama wrote to the GWA, it mentioned that in all of FY15, the hospital paid a total of $97,000 in water bills. That would account for maybe two months. So they've been behind 10 months. I don't think any of us would even get 10 days before our water was turned off. GWA and GPA have both been very accommodating to the hospital, and though I would much rather have used this money for what Senator Nerissa Underwood and I had hoped to use it for, or for some other project at GDOE, we really have to address this. And I wanted to make sure that before we close the February session, it was not going to be said that the Guam Legislature sat down back with its head in the ground and did not address what we all knew was happening up at the hospital. I mean, all of us. I was hoping for a phone call from someone saying, "We need this." I've not asked anybody from the hospital whether they need this. I just have seen the letter that says from their CEO that they are willing to pay $75,000 a month, which I know is unacceptable to the GWA and to GPA. So I think we have to pay down the entire debt and let them move forward, and the management team that's up there will not have to address this crisis. I'm still getting calls from other vendors, and I apologize that we can't find other sources of funds to address their needs. But I know, all of us know how important water is in our house. I think we can do after typhoons without power for a couple of days, but we cannot do without water. The sanitary condition is just unacceptable. And I still, you know, we have to address power because so much of the machine, all the machines at the hospital are run on power. We can't, they cannot lose either one of them. Though we can do without TV at home, and maybe even without a refrigerator, the patients at the hospital cannot do without power, and they definitely cannot do without water. So I'm asking my colleagues to please join me in passing this bill at this time. I thank you, Madam Speaker, for waiving the public hearing requirement, and I too will take the hit for asking for a waiver. But in this one, I just felt it was necessary, and since I had a fiscal note from BBMR dated the other day that there was 1.8, I knew that at least, or hopefully, at least 1.1 is still in there as of today, and that it'll be used to immediately pay the water and the power of the hospital, so that the management team can address its other needs, the IT and other concerns and building up there, they can address that without having to worry about whether or not the water's going to be turned off. And so I ask for my colleagues' assist, support in this, and, Madam Speaker, I again renew my motion to name James Espaldón as my co-sponsor in this.
On the amendment, Chair, Senator Espaldón is the co-sponsor, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on the main motion? Senator Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Naturally, I rise in full support of this legislation. I thank you, Madam Speaker, for waiving the public hearing requirement, given the urgency of the situation. And I just wanted to underscore, Madam Speaker, that this bill and these circumstances speak volumes to the cash situation of our government, and the need for us to exercise the fiscal restraint necessary for us to not be so eager to spend cash resources wherever they may reside, and to understand that we have a lot of urgent areas that need to be addressed, not only with respect to the payment of these particular vendors as they relate to the power and water situation up at the hospital, but every other vendor up at the hospital. Because a hospital vendor is a hospital vendor is a hospital vendor. They're all providing critical services, critical goods necessary for the operation of the organization. That is critical to the health and safety of this community. So going beyond just this particular appropriation, we need to understand that until we have reached a level in this government where our vendors are paid within 30 days, or we have the resources necessary to pay refunds within 30 days, that we need to be more physically disciplined with respect to how we go about appropriating the cash resources in this government until we get to a level where we are on time with our payments. Because paying on time doesn't just have to do with whether or not we're going to be disconnected in our power and water up at the hospital, it has to do with whether or not we're going to be paying exponentially higher fees or exponentially higher costs for services and for goods that our hospital needs in order to operate. Because when we pay late, prices go up. When prices go up, it exacerbates the financial situation up there at the hospital. So I'm incredibly grateful for the Vice Speaker to take the lead and introduce this piece of legislation. I would also like to recognize my colleague, Senator Nerissa Underwood, to my right, because she does have a bill in this session that is basically now not going to have the funding it needs in order to move forward, because it's being prioritized for this purpose. And this is what we are called to do, Madam Speaker, prioritize the funding necessary for us in order to secure the health and safety of our community. So I'd like to thank my two colleagues, I'd like to thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to encourage all of my colleagues to again be more mindful of our cash position, of our priorities, and to, of course, support Bill 237. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, of course, rise in support of Bill 237. I thank the Vice Speaker for moving this forward, and really for all our colleagues here who have really, in one way or the other, responded, you know, with the concern of the Guam Memorial Hospital and this impending notice of disconnection that you have provided us a copy of. You know, I just want to say, Madam Speaker, I really personally don't believe that the governor will allow for our hospital to be disconnected, their water or power to be disconnected. I may be wrong tomorrow, you know, that can prove me wrong, but I really don't believe that him being the governor of Guam and also being directly in charge of the hospital will allow that to happen. Perhaps one of the reasons why we've never heard, you know, any call for assistance is because the governor currently has existing appropriation authority. This body has passed a budget, the fiscal year 2016 budget, which included subsidies for our hospital, of which I believe a direct subsidy amount was probably about $10 million, a little over $10 million. And the hospital hasn't received that full amount. It's only been the end of the first quarter, so there were some funds that are being provided to the hospital, but it's not what, it's not the level or the amount of allotments that, you know, should be it's not the level or the amount of allotments that, you know, should be given to the hospital considering their dire situation. And so, you know, perhaps this legislation is a bit premature. However, I will stand in full support because anytime we were able to provide any resources to the hospital, it'll help. But, you know, I just don't think that appropriating this from this source now, considering the other areas that could use this fund, also related to the Healthy Futures Fund, could benefit from such an appropriation. So I just wanted to ensure that I state those for the record, and of course, I'm supportive of it, but just don't feel that this is actually necessary at this point because the governor, as I said, still has existing appropriation authority. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, does anyone else who would like to speak? Senator Espaldón, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I thank the good author, Vice Speaker, for adding me on as a co-sponsor. It's true that yesterday, after I left the session hall, after we had discussed the previous bill in which these funds were to be used for something other than that we're intended for, and I read the list of what the money could be spent on, right? And I saw, and I read out, that Guam Memorial operating funds definitely is allowed, that it just became apparent to me last night that we should probably use the funds for the GMH dilemma that they're in. So I did approach the good Vice Speaker this morning and to my, you know, to my joy, actually. He said he had already submitted a bill. I had a bill all written out, basically, in essence, do the same thing. When he had said he had introduced the bill, I was actually definitely pleasantly surprised because we were thinking along the same lines. However, the only reason why I really do want to stand up here aside from saying that I fully support this measure is to just make an amendment to this measure, Madam Speaker, because the funds that we are using are from the 2015 unreserved fund balance, the fiscal year 2015. We're now in 2016. And according to law, as I enumerated yesterday, that GMH is allowed twelve percent, I believe, of the Healthy Futures Fund for its operating expenses. And since we're talking about 2015, I can only assume, and I trust, that the twelve percent that GMH should get from Healthy Futures Funds has already been taken out. So this money, which is one point one million, is over and above what GMH should get. And really, if you take a look at the wording of the law, the Healthy Futures Fund law, we have the appropriation powers, but not necessarily for this. So I would just like to do a notwithstanding clause at the very beginning and basically have the line two, excuse me, line three at the very beginning before the word "the," the sum of one million, notwithstanding the provisions of Chapter Twenty-Six, Section Twenty-Six, Six Oh Three, Subsection D, Subsection Three of Title Eleven of the Guam Code Annotated. And bottom line, that's just to identify that if the twelve percent has already been taken out in 2015 for GMH purposes, this is over and above that amount, this way it makes it appropriate that we can take this money and give it to GMH. And that's my amendment, Madam Speaker, is just to cite the section in law that basically limits the funding to GMH at twelve percent, and basically this allows us to increase it using these funds. That's my amendment, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Senator, can you please make sure that the clerks get your amendment because the title and section, of course, are very important, too.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I did check, and just as a side note, I did check with legal counsel to make sure I cited the correct section, and I will get that information to the clerk, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on the amendment, Espaldón's amendment, any objection? No objection, so ordered. Senator Munia Barnes, on the main motion?
Hi, Madam Speaker, yes, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Two Three Seven Dash Thirty-Three, Madam Speaker. And as I was listening to the retiring speaker speak, I just wanted to bring to the attention of this august body that just earlier today, as we look at trying to make the Band-Aid repairs, the continuing Band-Aid repairs, to support the efforts of Guam Memorial Hospital, I want to note to this august body, if they didn't hear, that there is an additional, if I'm not mistaken, three million dollars that is owed from the hospital to the retirement fund. We did receive a call saying that one of the employees wanted to retire because they had medical health issues and they've already reached their max, but because the hospital was not giving, paying into the retirement fund, and again, proven that the hospital has failed to do that at the present time, that this one employee could not retire. I don't know, I was hoping to see, I do know that based on what the retirement, retiring speaker spoke about and the amounts and the percentages that could be utilized was, if there was any additional funds to that, from that Healthy Future Funds, I don't have the numbers in front of me, could that also be looked at because there are some employees who wanted to retire? Or do I need to, I may need to look at a separate bill or something, but maybe get legal's opinion on that and maybe take a couple of minutes recess, just so that I can talk this out with the author. Only because it has been acknowledged that GMH has not been paying the retirement fund and that there are employees of the Guam Memorial Hospital who really want to retire, also dealing with health issues, and they're prohibited because the hospital has been negligent in paying and doing their part. I'm just...
I'm going to go ahead and just make a ruling that because it is an emergency and it's one subject matter in terms of a debt, I understand it's a debt, but this is basically water and power. And I would suggest that, yes, you do consider then a second bill. And when we, you consider the amount, one point one, and based on the letters that were sent here, if you take six hundred and seventy-five thousand for power and five hundred thousand, that's already one thousand, I mean, one point one seven five million dollars. So there's definitely not going to be sufficient funds to be able to use to provide for retirement. So I'm going to go ahead and make that ruling and request that you do submit or, you know, file a separate bill just for the retirement.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, does anybody else who would like to speak? There being none, Mr. Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
Madam Speaker, in recognition of the fact that I pulled out a bill from under her high heels, can I ask that Senator Nerissa Underwood be listed also as a co-sponsor on this, since it was our bill that was killed?
On that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. And I just wanted to point out one thing, Madam Speaker. The only reason why I decided to take it from this area, from what we had, was that was the only place that I knew where there was cash. Where anyplace else, I'm not sure whether or not there is cash. And no one wants to admit that there's a cash shortfall, but at least in this one, in this unreserved balance, I know that there's one point eight. And I'm hoping that we can take care of this. And so I thank you very much, and I ask for my colleagues' support in this measure.
On the motion and to send Two Thirty-Seven Dash Thirty-Three, the third reading filed, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Respecho, where are you?
Senator...
There you are. So, yes, can we, we'll just take a brief recess.
Wait.
Senator, Mr. Vice Speaker?
My, I've been reminded that my math is off, my abacus doesn't work too well. The two letters that we received was, as you stated, five hundred and six...
Seven five.
Seven five. So it should read one point one seven five.
One point seven five.
Yeah.
Senator Respecho, I need for him to move and...
I guess the Vice Speaker could have made this motion, but I moved to reconsider the actions of the body.
Okay. On that motion, are there any objections for the reconsideration of the actions of this body? There being none, so ordered. So, okay, so now, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you. Inasmuch as my abacus is broken, it should read one point one seven five to pay off both outstanding letters that we have received.
Okay. On that amendment, no objections, so ordered. Thank you. And on the motion and to send the third reading...
On the motion, I...
Thank you. Yes, to send out that reading filed without any objections, so ordered. Okay. We're going to take a brief recess. I can talk to legal counsel and the clerk to make sure we get the amendments in and place it on the voting file. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R.
Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Indication and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend Subsections C, E, F, and G, and add a new subsection H of Section two one of Public Law thirty-two dash zero five three, relative to appropriating funds from the unappropriated Guam Highway Fund revenues in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and Guam Highway Fund balance to the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other capital improvement projects related to improving the roads of Guam.
Pro call. Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon, yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho.
Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho.
Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R.
Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Indication and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend Subsections C, E, F, and G, and add a new subsection H of Section two one of Public Law thirty-two dash zero five three, relative to appropriating funds from the unappropriated Guam Highway Fund revenues in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and Guam Highway Fund balance to the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other capital improvement projects related to improving the roads of Guam.
Pro call. Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon, yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R.
Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Indication and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend Section eight one zero four P of Article one, Chapter eight, Title four Guam Code Annotated, and Section five one one zero two eight of Chapter fifty-one, Title seventeen Guam Code Annotated, relative to advancing compliance with the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission by designating probation officers of the Superior Court of Guam as uniformed officers and by including the chief of probation of the unified judiciary as a member of the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission.
Pro call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon, yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R.
Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Indication and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend Subsections C, E, F, and G, and add a new subsection H of Section two one of Public Law thirty-two dash zero five three, relative to appropriating funds from the unappropriated Guam Highway Fund revenues in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and Guam Highway Fund balance to the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other capital improvement projects related to improving the roads of Guam.
Pro call. Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon, yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R.
Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Indication and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend Subsections C, E, F, and G, and add a new subsection H of Section two one of Public Law thirty-two dash zero five three, relative to appropriating funds from the unappropriated Guam Highway Fund revenues in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and Guam Highway Fund balance to the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other capital improvement projects related to improving the roads of Guam.
Pro call. Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon, yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R.
Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Indication and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend Subsections C, E, F, and G, and add a new subsection H of Section two one of Public Law thirty-two dash zero five three, relative to appropriating funds from the unappropriated Guam Highway Fund revenues in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and Guam Highway Fund balance to the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other capital improvement projects related to improving the roads of Guam.
Pro call. Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon, yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R.
Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Indication and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend Subsections C, E, F, and G, and add a new subsection H of Section two one of Public Law thirty-two dash zero five three, relative to appropriating funds from the unappropriated Guam Highway Fund revenues in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and Guam Highway Fund balance to the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other capital improvement projects related to improving the roads of Guam.
Pro call. Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Pass.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Pass.
Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 125 dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R.
Bill Number 136 dash thirty-three C R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Indication and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend Subsections C, E, F, and G, and add a new subsection H of Section two one of Public Law thirty-two dash zero five three, relative to appropriating funds from the unappropriated Guam Highway Fund revenues in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and Guam Highway Fund balance to the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other capital improvement projects related to improving the roads of Guam.
Pro call. Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esbaldon.
Pass.
Senator Esbaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Pass.
Senator Torres, aye.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye.
Speaker Wampat. Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. The very first bill. I'm going to ask the clerk to read. The title is Bill Number 125-33-COR.
Bill Number 125-33-COR, introduced by Frank B. Uggins Jr., an act to amend Section 8104P of Article 1, Chapter 8, Title 4 Guam Code Annotated, and Section 51102A of Chapter 51, Title 17 Guam Code Annotated, relative to advancing compliance with the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission by designating probation officers of the Superior Court of Guam as uniformed officers, and by including the chief of probation of the Unified Judiciary as a member of the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon, yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 125-33, received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 125-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 136-33-COR.
Bill Number 136-33-COR, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend subsections C, E, F, and G, and add a new subsection H of Section 2.1 of Public Law 32-053, relative to appropriating funds from the unappropriated Guam Highway Fund revenues in fiscal year 2015 and Guam Highway Fund balance to the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other capital improvement projects related to improving the roads of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. I'm sorry? Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Bill Number 136-33, received nine yea votes, six nay votes. Bill Number 136-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 143-33-COR.
Bill Number 143-33-COR, as substituted, further substituted by the Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizens, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Judith T. Wampat, EDD, R.J. Rispicio, T.R. Munia Barnes, Brant T. McCready, V. Anthony Ada, B. J.F. Cruz, Tommy Morrison, N.B. Underwood, Ph.D. An act to amend Section 77302 of Article 3, Chapter 77, and Sections 90105C, 90107, 90108A, 90109, and 90114 of Chapter 90, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, and Section 3401.1H of Chapter 3, Title 16 GCA, to add new Sections 90109.1, 90109C, and 90105A13, and repeal Section 90109A4 all of Chapter 90, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to expanding the smoking regulations of the Natasha Protection Act of 2005 to providing for increased enforcement and to providing for enforcement training.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Bill Number 143-33-COR, received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 143-33 is duly passed by this body. Congratulations. Bill Number 180-33-COR.
Bill Number 180-33-COR, introduced by T. Ciata, an act to grant a certificate of title for lot number 5138-2-R3, New-1-1, Ipau Tumon, Municipality of Dedido, in the name of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, and to authorize the commercial leasing of said lot.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 180-33, received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 180-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 192-33-LS.
Bill Number 192-33-LS, as amended by the sponsor. Introduced by T. Ciata, an act to amend Public Law 22-18, relative to deleting from the Government of Guam reserved lands list the 35 acres of Lot 10122-R18, Dedido reserved for the Guam Department of Education for the construction of the Astumbo Elementary School, and transferring said 35 acres of Lot 10122-R18 to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission for residential and agricultural leasing.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, nay. Bill Number 192-33-LS, received 14 yea votes and one nay. Bill Number 192-33-LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 193-33-LS.
Bill Number 193-33-LS, as amended by the sponsor. Introduced by T. Ciata, an act to amend Public Law 22-18, relative to deleting from the Government of Guam reserved lands list the 35 acres of Lot 10122-R18, Dedido reserved for the Guam Department of Education for the construction of the Astumbo Middle School, and transferring said 35 acres of Lot 10122-R18 to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission for residential and agricultural leasing.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, nay. Bill Number 193-33-LS, received 14 yea votes and one nay. Bill Number 193-33-LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 194-33-LS.
Bill Number 194-33-LS, as amended by the sponsor. Introduced by T. Ciata, an act to amend Public Law 22-18, relative to deleting from the Government of Guam reserved lands list, Lot Number 3463, Municipality of Agania Heights, reserved for the Guam Department of Education for the construction of a central high school, and transferring said lot to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission for residential and agricultural leasing.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, nay. Bill Number 194-33-LS, received 14 yea votes and one nay vote. Bill Number 194-33-LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 195-33-LS.
Bill Number 195-33-LS, as amended by the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement. Introduced by T. Ciata, an act to amend Public Law 22-18, relative to deleting from the Government of Guam reserved lands list, Lot 3470, Municipality of Chalipago, which is reserved for the Guam Department of Education, 35 acres for a middle school, for the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, 35 acres for an acute care hospital, for the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, 5 acres for an adult residential treatment facility, 10 acres for a children's residential treatment facility, and 2 acres for a crisis center. And for the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services, 2 acres for a homeless shelter, 2 acres for a children's foster home, and 4 acres for a public health facility, and transferring said lot to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission for residential and agricultural leasing.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, nay.
Bill number one ninety-five dash thirty-three L.S. received ten yea votes and five nay votes. Is that correct? Okay, five nay votes. Bill number one ninety-five dash thirty-three L.S. is duly passed by this body. Bill number one ninety-seven dash thirty-three L.S.
Bill number one nine-seven dash thirty-three L.S. As substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., T. Ciata, T.R. Munia Barnes, R.J. Rusfishe, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Frank F. Blash Jr., Mary Camacho Torres, an act to amend section seven seven three zero two of Article Three, Chapter Seventy-Seven, Title Ten, Guam Code Annotated, relative to extending the duties of the Guam Police Department Community Assisted Policing Effort, CAPE, volunteers to include the Twelfth Festival of Pacific Arts Festback.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada? Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin? Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison? Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfishe? Senator Rusfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood? Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat?
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, aye.
Bill number one ninety-seven dash thirty-three L.S. received fifteen yea votes. Bill number one ninety-seven dash thirty-three L.S. is duly passed by this body. Bill number two zero eight dash thirty-three L.S.
Bill number two zero eight dash thirty-three L.S. as amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., Michael F. Q. Siniklis, V. Anthony Ada, T.R. Munia Barnes, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to amend section five eight one zero four of Chapter Fifty-Eight, Division Five, Title Five, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the refinancing of the government of Guam's obligations with respect to the Guam Education Financing Foundation Certificates of Participation, Guam Public School Facilities Project, Series Two Zero Zero Six A, the Guam Education Financing Foundation Certificates of Parti- Participation, Guam Public School Facilities Project, Series Two Zero Zero Six B, and the Guam Education Financing Foundation Certificates of Participation, Guam Public School Facilities Project, Series Two Zero Zero Eight.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada? Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin? Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison? Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfishe? Senator Rusfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood? Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat? Speaker Wampat, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, aye.
Bill number two zero eight dash thirty-three L.S. received fifteen yea votes. Bill number two zero eight dash thirty-three L.S. is duly passed by this body. Bill number two eleven dash thirty-three C.O.R.
Bill number two one one dash thirty-three C.O.R., introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to amend sections one two two three one seven and one two two three oh one eight of Article Twenty-Three, Chapter Twelve, Part Two, Title Ten, Guam Code Annotated, relative to extending the timeline for obtaining exemptions and exceptions for social worker licensure upon the promulgation and enactment of the rules and regulations.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada? Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin? Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison? Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfishe? Senator Rusfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood? Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat?
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two eleven dash thirty-three C.O.R. received fifteen yea votes. Bill number two eleven dash thirty-three C.O.R. is duly passed by this body. Bill number two twelve dash thirty-three C.O.R.
Bill number two one two dash thirty-three C.O.R. as substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by B.J. F. Cruz, Frank F. Blash Jr., an act to amend sections two and three of Public Law Thirty-three dash zero one relative to authorizing the Attorney General the use of funds for experts in federal litigation cases.
Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada? Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin? Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison? Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfishe? Senator Rusfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood? Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat?
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, nay.
Bill number two twelve dash thirty-three C.O.R. received fourteen yea votes and one nay vote. Bill number two twelve dash thirty-three C.O.R. is duly passed by this body. Bill number two fourteen dash thirty-three C.O.R.
Bill number two one four dash thirty-three C.O.R. As substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Historic Preservation, introduced by Tommy Morrison, Frank B. Ugin Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Brant T. McCready, an act to appropriate three hundred thousand dollars from the Guam Preservation Trust Funds authorized in Section Two of Public Law Thirty-three dash nineteen to the Department of Public Works for the repair of the Yamada Bridge Towers in anticipation of the Twelfth Festival of Pacific Arts.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada? Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin? Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison? Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfishe? Senator Rusfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood? Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat?
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, nay.
Bill number two one four dash thirty-three C.O.R. received fourteen yea votes and one nay. Bill number two fourteen dash thirty-three C.O.R. is duly passed by this body. Bill number two fifteen dash thirty-three C.O.R.
Bill number two one five dash thirty-three C.O.R. As substituted by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, and amended on the floor, introduced by B.J. F. Cruz, R.J. Rusfishe, Mary Camacho Torres, an act to add a new subsection C. to section six seven point four one two of Article Four, Chapter Sixty-Seven of Title Nine, Guam Code Annotated, relative to recognizing the successful rehabilitation and treatment of individuals convicted as first offenders in drug cases between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand five.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada? Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin? Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison? Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfishe? Senator Rusfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood? Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat?
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two fifteen dash thirty-three C.O.R. received fifteen yea votes. Bill number two fifteen dash thirty-three C.O.R. is duly passed by this body. Bill number two twenty-two dash thirty-three C.O.R.
Bill number two 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 dash thirty-three C.O.R. As substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication and further substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by B.J. F. Cruz, an act to amend sections six two zero seven and six two zero seven point one and to add new sections six two one eight point two and six two one eight point three of Article Two, Chapter Six of Title Four, Guam Code Annotated, relative to prohibiting bonus pay and mandating proper pay and pay adjustment processing for unclassified employees of the government of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada? Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Ugin? Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon? Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison? Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfishe? Senator Rusfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood? Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat?
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Morrison.
Bill Number 222-33COR, receive 13 yea votes, 2 nay votes. So Bill Number 222-33COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 186-33COR. Oh, it hasn't gone out yet, you don't have? Oh, 186? Didn't we? Yes, we have 186. Everyone's, does everyone have 186? Okay, so Renee? 186, okay.
Bill Number 186-33COR, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 Hotel Occupancy Tax Hot Surplus Fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau for a pilot program to support the needs of the growing Korean visitor market.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Underwood.
Bill 186-33, received 11 aye votes and 4 nay votes. Bill 186-33 has been duly passed by Imena Tantaites Lesa Tuengwahan. Bill 237-33, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, read the bill. Bill Number 237-33LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by BJ F. Cruz, James V. Espaldon, and B. Underwood, Ph.D., an act to appropriate $1,175,000 from the unreserved fund balance of the Healthy Futures Fund and as of September 30, 2015, to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, GMHA, for the payment of GMHA outstanding Guam Power Authority and Guam Waterworks Authority obligations.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Bill Number 237-33LS, receive 15 yea votes. Bill Number 237-33LS is duly passed by this body. On the nomination of Donovan L. Brooks to serve as a member of the KGTF PBS Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Senator Underwood, are you voting on this? That Mr. Donovan L. Brooks receive unanimous support, he is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Cynthia V. QB to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Equalization, all in favor, please raise your hand. May Cynthia V. QB receive unanimous support, and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Richard W. Hamlin to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Richard W. Hamlin receive unanimous support, and he's duly conserve, confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Dr. Ho Sang Yee to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents, all in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Ho Sang Yee. All in favor? Okay. Mr. Dr. Ho Yang Yee is duly, receive unanimous support, and he's duly confirmed by this body. Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Rispisho, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
No objection, we are duly, we are on adjourn until, subject to the call of the speaker.[1793.86][1793.86]